About time to say the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I show nine o'clock. We're opening up the meeting of the Kauai County Board of Commissioners. First thing off, we need to approve the consent agenda.
I didn't see nothing wrong with the minutes.
I didn't either. I would move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion on this motion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And I'm gonna close the commission meeting and open up the board health meeting. Carrie, if you wanna come forward.
Morning.
Morning.
So, first off, we'll start with giving you an update of the current numbers for Kansas and for the county.
Thank you.
So, just a reminder that these are updated now Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So, these numbers would have been updated as of Friday afternoon. So, both cases for Kauai County are fully recovered and, and back to, back to work. And so, Ford County was sitting at 1,299 positive cases. And that's 99.32 per thousand, percent per thousand, right? For cases per thousand. I always forget how that goes. Where we're, we're testing at 12.93% per thousand.
How many of you tested in Kauai County?
About between 35 and 40. A lot of that is pre-op right now. People are getting ready for surgeries and, you know, things like that that they've put off for quite a while. And so, they have to be tested before they go in for surgery. So, just wanted to give you an update on where that's at. We don't currently have any open cases that are a concern for COVID at this time.
So, we're at about 1.3% testing roughly, or about 1 to 1.5% testing. And then Dodge is about at 10% testing.
The next item I was wanting to discuss with you was the reopening of the courthouse. We had a department head meeting last week and discussed kind of a plan as department heads. And so, I was hoping to discuss that with you today. And what we had talked about was limited access, doing by appointment only. That staff could enter through the west door if they were able, or through the, the north door is gonna be blocked off. If they need to use the elevator, of course, they could use the east, east door. But patrons would be encouraged to park in the east lot and then would be let in through the east door. So, that way, they would have access to the elevator to be ADA compliant. So, I would ask if, if this is what we choose to do going forward, that that parking lot return to being for patron use only and that staff park elsewhere. And we would post the office phone numbers on the doors and that each department would, would be responsible for, for taking appointments and staggering those appointments just to kind of work on the float for their own office. And then admin time would be, admin leave, excuse me, would be over if employees would like their, that time off that they would need to use their PTO. And if we're opening up everything else in the county, it's time to, to work on getting the courthouse open as well. We've got the sneeze guards are, are either completed or almost completed. And Goose's have got the doors almost completed. Those that wanted half doors are almost done. So, every, every office has kind of developed a plan. And clerk's office is gonna do a split door and close the other one. Treasurer's office is gonna do a full-length sneeze guard. Registered D's is doing a split door. Appraiser is doing a split door. We're going to leave our, our first door open, but our second door closed and still just screen for import, uh, for patrons at that, at that second door that's in ours, just, just for a couple of weeks, just to see where things go. So, that was kind of what we discussed in our department head meeting. And just wanted to get some feedback from you guys as far as your thoughts for opening back up.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about the jail?
They've got their, their own plans. I'll let, I'll let them speak to that.
As far as like the courts, we've developed a plan for that. By us remaining at appointment only, we're able to do it on a more limited and controlled capacity. Or we'll have some help from the sheriff's office in getting people in, getting them up here. We're gonna block off, we can't, we're gonna use the, I don't know what you call them, the airport guide or thingies, little seatbelts.
Stains.
Yeah. Ideal to block off some of the other stairways and entrances. So, they come in, are directed directly up to the courtroom. They stay here, they get done, they go down, and then we limit the numbers. Um, we have our docket that's scheduled for tomorrow. We went ahead and broke up into pieces. So, we have cases at like 10 o'clock, at like 1:30, yeah, at like 1:00 and at like 3:00. So, that we're broken up into smaller groups during that time. Um, trying to do our cases by attorney. So, that way, each attorney that comes over and their respective clients will be at one time and trying to avoid that cross contamination.
We were able to locate some civilian masks. And so, we've prepackaged those in, in bags, we've properly put them on and take them off and dispose of them. So, we've, we've given those to district courts for their, for their patrons to put on when they enter the, the courthouse building. So, we do have those available for people coming in, um, as well as these COVID screening tools. Let me pass, what I've already given one to you. Um, I could, I handed these out at the department head meeting as well. Um, so that way, departments, like registered D's, as they, as they have people coming in and, and perhaps being in their office for an extended period of time, could use a screening tool to help just identify if maybe that person that's gonna be in their office for an extended period of time is gonna be at risk for COVID. But it, it was designed with, um, the court, district court in mind to help screen. Because as we know, that temperature is no longer a sole indicator of COVID. So, this was used, or this could be used to, uh, screen for, uh, symptoms. So, the Commons Building, we're gonna ask that that building be opened. Um, the museum has to remain closed due to the governor's order. But the soda fountain would really like to open so they can start providing those services to the public. Um, the library has, has a very good plan in place. They're, they're providing curbside service right now. And their board has approved, um, their plan through, through May and, and kind of slowly working, um, their way back to full services. And then K-State has closed extension through this month. So, but we would like to see that building be open so that way the soda fountain could, could return to business as usual as well. And then all of our, our downtown businesses will be able to, to open back up, which will be a very exciting thing.
Now, the courthouse door has remained locked, but to go in by appointment, who's gonna be go down and let them into the appointment?
That'll be up to each individual office. And then they will also be walking them back down and letting them out.
Good of you.
Everybody in each office gonna show up for work or just?
Yes.
And the phone numbers will be on the door, that just ring whatever appropriate office when they, somebody comes to the door?
So, they can either call ahead or call when they're downstairs. I mean, not that walk-ins couldn't be taken if, if you're there and you don't have any appointments. If they call when they're downstairs, you know, you, you could let somebody, let somebody in. But we're just trying to limit the amount of people in each office at, at a time is the idea. And then, of course, there's no way to limit it in a stairwell. And so, that way, you can kind of keep the traffic in at least a one-way direction. So, that was the idea with that plan. We'll see how it works.
It's a good plan.
Have you heard that one of our local lakes is restricting Ford County vehicles coming in?
I, I, I heard the rumor.
I didn't hear you could do that, but apparently you can.
I didn't hear you, you could do that either. And I'd like to see how they, they plan to enforce that.
Now, I assume if they didn't have any federal funding at all, that they probably could. But I'm afraid if you got federal funding, I bet you can't.
That could get really interesting.
Yeah, it is.
So, so with this in mind, that, that would be what I would ask is if you guys are okay with this, that we would, we could essentially start this tomorrow. And so, it would be implementing this plan, starting tomorrow, um, to have everybody come back to work, opening up the east parking lot for patrons only, no staff. And then, um, the admin time is, is over. We're back to just using PTO time if, if you would like time off of work.
Was your idea for hazard pay that you, that your department and the sheriff's office receives? Is that something that needs to carry on or come to an end as well?
I'm, I'm up for discussion on that.
We didn't, we put it down, we discussed that today?
No.
We done it?
We talked about it.
Revised on 18th, I think.
Hmm, I think Chris had initially, oh, and Chris isn't here.
As long as this is going on, pretty much with my understanding. So, it kind of isn't, it was set indefinitely. Though, I would advise you probably regarding the hazard pay, that's probably something that we should discuss in the normal, uh, commissioner meeting rather than just part of the board.
The next phase will be versus June, won't it?
Well, we sure hope. That's gonna be the next thing we discuss, um, is, is what happened with the governor's plan. Cause that, that kind of got blown out of the water on Thursday. So, um, do we wanna go there and then we can come back to, to what happens with the courthouse?
Can we make a decision on the courthouse thing? No, we gotta wait till we're in commission meeting.
Oh, true story, yes. So, sorry. Okay, so, you know, initially, the, the plans were released for, um, Governor Kelly's phases. And there was one, two, and three. And then Thursday afternoon, in a very peculiar way, I'll say, uh, phase 1.5 was released. I actually found out from a member of the public that it was released. It wasn't released through proper channels, I would say, since we're the ones who have to enforce it. It was kind of released publicly and then, um, and then kind of came down. So, um, but either way, it's out and this is what it is. So, um, so May 14th, phase 1.5 was released, and we'll kind of talk about that. Here's some of the highlights of it.
I guess that was something Bob wasn't wrong.
I would say it was, yeah.
So, as you can see, phase 1.5 begins today. Um, what, some of the biggest things that this does is it limits mass gatherings to stay at 10 people rather than moving it up to 30, as we had originally discussed. Um, salons and barber shops and massage can open today, um, which was originally not going to be the case until phase two. Commencement ceremonies, graduations can take place as long as they follow some of the, the regulations here. And again, that wasn't supposed to happen until phase two, but she's allowing that in 1.5. Organized sports and practices cannot start yet. Um, swimming pools cannot open yet. And of course, rodeos are not allowed.
Carrie, could I ask something?
Of course you can.
Like that large entertainment venue with capacity of 2,000 plus, what, what would be under the 2,000?
Most things around here.
You do everything you want to do around here, it would be 2,000. What would that, what kind of venue could you have that meet that guideline?
That's kind of an open-ended deal there.
It is, there's a lot of gray area there, isn't there?
I mean, you, from the mass gathering to 10, and then she goes down to the point where it's up to 2,000.
I know.
I mean, that's where I said that's where the rodeo ought to be, right there, and that's 2,000, just as much as this minus 10.
That's why I said I, I'm just here to, uh, give you the updates as far as what the, what the governor came down and, and gave us.
As far as for the rodeo and stuff like that, from the reason it was banned in phase one, and my understanding, I guess, is it's still not permitted in phase 1.5 is under the organized sports tournaments or practices portion. Admittedly, some of these are confusing because there's a lot of things that large entertainment venues with capacity of 2,000 or more. Well, if you can't have a gathering of more than 10 people.
Are you gonna have 2,000 less?
Unless maybe it's like when we talked with the rodeo about if they had everything portioned off into 10-person deals. It seems like all these kind of compound with each other. So, like, even if you had everything sectioned off, like, let's say a convention. So, it's not a normal thing, but just like a gun show, something like this, where you have a convention, those type of things. Um, even though they could possibly do it under some of the other provisions of this, because that area permits more than 10,000, more than 2,000 people, that wouldn't be permitted. And then, admittedly, they are fairly confusing. Uh, and that's why a lot of times, that's why they keep releasing the guidance and frequently ask questions on these about what you can and can't do. So.
Rodeo would be an entertainment venue. I mean, it fits qualifications in several places, except the fact that it's 10 or more, it's more than 10.
And the organized.
Still under 2,000.
Yeah. My understanding, Carrie, please correct me if I'm wrong in this, but the reason they weren't permitted under section, uh, phase one was because it fell afoul of the organized sports tournaments and practices. What they, when they, cause they released their specific guidance on one. I don't know if they've released specific guidance on 1.5 yet, have they?
Not as of this morning. So, again, I, I was just simply passing along the information that we were given, whatever it may be. And then that is, that is up to you guys. So, I feel like I, I already gave you my, my list of concerns and, and those were addressed. And, um, and now it's, it's to you.
Did they, have they put another date on it or do you all know?
I haven't heard.
No, it's, it's continuing for this weekend.
They are? I thought it was called out.
No.
There's, seems to be kind of both information, um, being put out to the public, kind of different things. Cause I saw some stuff on Facebook saying yesterday, or over the end of last week, that it was canceled. And then my understanding is my, it's still going forward and so it's.
What is happening is, a, and, and I'm sure that one of them will chime in if, if I'm misrepresenting this. But I've, I've spoken to them many times over the weekend is that Triangle Rodeo Club is no longer putting on the rodeo. They are leasing the ground to Medicine River Rodeo, who is putting on the rodeo this weekend.
So, they changed names on it.
My understanding, my understanding, Triangle, Triangle Rodeo doesn't want to be involved in any potential liability on it.
Correct. I mean, this is a, this is a governor's order.
One thing we do have to address with this, um, we do have a meeting scheduled this afternoon um, between sheriff's office, P D, um, Carrie and I to kind of address how, how to go, how to, how we're going to respond to this, how we're gonna handle this. Um, but one thing that the commissioners, we do need to address no matter what on this is that some of our facilities are used. In this case, my understanding, they're not gonna use the concession stand, um, or the community building or the barn. But they were still planning on using the restrooms. And regardless of what goes on or what we, what kind of we figure out how to handle this, the county cannot facilitate a violation of the governor's order. Um, there is some question right now in the AG's office, um, agreed to take a look and a review. Um, they announced last Monday as to whether, um, violations of the governor's orders could be criminally enforced or not, and about those type of things. But in either case, regardless of what would come of that or come of this, the county can't facilitate a violation of the governor's orders. And so, that's something we need to think about moving forward.
What are you saying, Shay, they shouldn't be able to use the bathrooms? Is that your opinion?
Well, my opinion on it is the reason, and my understanding, Carrie, is you have talked to the governor's office and they have confirmed that rodeos still fall foul of 1.5.
I'm waiting to hear from them.
Wait to hear.
But their initial, their initial release that I have says that rodeos are not allowed till phase 2.0.
Okay. So, at least at this point, it's our understanding that they're not permitted. Um, and as such, the county can't facilitate a violation of the governor's order. Um, regardless of whether they can be criminally enforced or not, whether, however that's decided to be handled, we can't permit them to use our facilities in violation of a governor's order. It's just kind of that simple as to that matter. Regardless of whether they can or cannot be criminally enforced, um, or whether it's chosen to do such. So, that's the one thing I think we do need to address. Also, the other thing, just so you guys are aware, while we do have a contract with Triangle Rodeo Club to permit to use the facilities, Triangle Rodeo Club is not putting this on now. Triangle Rodeo Club is out. They are simply leasing the ground. We have no agreement, agreement with Medicine River Rodeo to permit them to use the facilities, at the bare minimum regarding how to approach this, the county can't facilitate it.
See that, the restrooms be all, it belonged to the county.
Huh?
The restrooms is all, it belonged to the county.
That is my understanding that it will be used right now. Um, cause they're not, and Carrie, please correct me if I'm wrong, cause you talked more about this. My understanding, they're not using the barn, community building, or concession stand.
Not that I'm aware of.
No, I didn't think you were.
Huh? Oh, yeah, wouldn't be able to use the parking area either.
They still have a key to the community room, don't they?
Triangle Rodeo.
Triangle, Triangle Rodeo Club does. Medicine River Rodeo does not. So, unless somebody gave them a key, they wouldn't have any access to any of our facilities. Unless that was an agreement when they supposedly leased under, uh, the Triangle Rodeo Club that they let them use our keys.
Which Triangle Rodeo Club has no authority to permit that. Um, Triangle Rodeo Club has an agreement with us. We have no, um, agreement with Medicine River regarding the use of our facilities.
I would think they realize that. I mean, I don't think that's gonna be.
I, I don't foresee that being an issue. I assume probably, given that it's my understanding, it's their intention to go forward despite the governor that they understand that at the bare minimum, the county can't have, we can't facilitate it. So, I know they talked about they could get porta-potties. I assume that's what they'll need to do, depending on how this goes forward. Like I said, we have a meeting at 3:00 today to kind of address this.
You have a meeting with the rodeo club?
No.
No, we have a meeting with Carrie, me, and the two law enforcement agencies. And I am awaiting that AG opinion, hopefully. I'm gonna give them a call. I found out this, uh, over Friday afternoon or the weekend about what's going on with this. Um, I'm going to give the AG's office a call today to see kind of where they are on that opinion regarding the ability to criminally enforce it.
What is the penalty for us allowing this to happen?
For us?
Yeah.
If we permit it, then we would be facilitating.
We're not allowing it to happen, it's if we don't permit them any of our facilities, the rest of it's out of our control, correct?
Now, I just wanna know, he's saying that, that if we allow this to happen, I wanna know what the penalty is.
Which thing are you asking?
Use the restrooms.
Well, at that point, we would be facilitating a violation of the governor, governor's order potentially. At that point, the county would be facilitating the commission of a crime, um, which, cause it's considered a class, it's a classic. a crime, um which, cause it's considered a cla- it's a classic misdemeanor to violate a governor's order. Now, once again, there is an A G's opinion pending on whether that is, can be criminally enforced or not, but in either case, as a government entity, regardless of whether there's a penalty or not, whether it can be criminally enforced against the county or not, we can't. I can, I have to advise you that we
Can't intentionally?
Yeah, we can't facilitate it by any means. Even if it's determined that they're not criminally, it can't be criminally enforced on private citizen. Government entity can't be doing that.
Well, if we don't allow them to use county property, I can't see how we're doing anything but what we're supposed to. I mean, if we can't let them use county property, we gotta, you know, let them use it. What they do is, the rest of what they do is up to them.
That's the best way to go. We need to give them plenty of time to be able to get nicely down here with some porta potties too, or whoever's gonna get them. That's it. Restrooms is off limits, yeah.
You think they intend to go ahead with it? Is the last you've heard?
Uh, I haven't spoken with them.
Yes.
They do.
They do.
Well, I don't, I don't question that.
And they're aware that there are potential consequences and they've given me the name of their attorney and the state representative that they're speaking to.
But do they know that they're not gonna be allowed to use the restrooms? Do they already know this?
That I didn't get into. Restrooms was the least of our, I'll be honest, restrooms was the least of our conversations that we have had over the weekend. To say that they're a very uh passionate group is a
Understatement?
Yes.
Well, we need somebody to tell them, kinda help them be able to use them.
I have no problem with that.
So they'll, so they'll have time to get some, make them, make a lot of this work.
Okay, I can do that.
If that's what you guys want.
Yeah. All, that's all we can do. I mean, that's what we can't, if we can't even let them use the restrooms, then we can't let them use our restrooms. We can't intentionally be a violation. We just need to tell them you can't use county property and what you guys do. It's up to you and not us, but we can't let you use our facilities and be in violation.
If they use it, we're not giving them consent to do it. That takes us off the hook.
Well, the bathrooms, do the bathrooms lock or?
I'm sure they do.
Yes, they do.
Yeah. Do they lock up?
Um and so that's kind of the first of that. Like I said, we have a meeting this afternoon to address what the response will be and how to handle it. Um but for the commissioners, what I wanted to bring to you guys was that issue. Because that issue is one thing that the bare minimum, even if there isn't determined that there isn't going to be any enforcement, that uh any criminal enforcement of it, we can't, the county can't be involved in it, facilitating a violation.
Think we better have that in motion.
Yeah, though, and, and I think we, yeah, we can discuss and how it needs to be made out of the
We're still
Yeah, we're still board health.
Yeah. Don't let her forget that.
Okay.
Get out.
Okay, absolutely. Um that was all I had as far as, as phase one point five. Um did you guys have any other questions as far as governor's phase one point five that I could answer at this time?
When is one point seven five coming in?
That is the million dollar question at, at this point, isn't it?
When is two supposed to, phase two supposed to start?
June first.
Hell, that isn't that far off.
No, it just took all of our plans that we had and
Effectively nullified the entirety of these special meeting on.
Everything.
That was good of them.
That, that meeting that we had that morning, you know, yeah, it well, that, we'll just leave it at that. Um the other thing that I will tell you um in regards to COVID nineteen is that we are seeing an, in an upswing of pediatric symptoms regarding COVID nineteen. They're seeing almost like um oh, let me find the name of it, like a Kawasaki disease, give me an inflammation of like a toxic like inflammation of lymph nodes here and swelling of the tongue and things like that. So um it is, it is interesting on, on that end of things to see how this continues to evolve as time goes on. You know, I know we've discussed that once before about how the, the symptoms have continued to mutate and evolve. Um that they are seeing an upswing in pediatric cases of, of things like that. So um uh we're gonna continue to watch for that. And, and also a, a thing called COVID toes. That people are having such problems, respiratory problems, and they're not gonna be outwardly coughing, but you're gonna start to see that their toes turn purple from lack of oxygen. So when I say that it's, you can't, and you can't just monitor temperatures and, and be able to tell that they're sick anymore, it's because there's things like this that are that are popping up that are related to COVID that are, are silent and scary um that we're kind of watching for. So just some, some updates that I wanted to let you know about. That was all I had for Board of Health.
I don't have any more questions, y'all. Okay, I'm gonna close the Board of Health meeting then, we'll return to the commission meeting.
Okay.
And we need to uh I'll entertain a motion to prohibit the use of the, the restrooms at the rodeo. County restrooms.
I'll second. Just to clarify, apologize as, um was the motion to not permit them to use the restrooms?
Yeah.
It, I would recommend the motion be that they not be, that in compliance with the governor's order, uh we can not permit the rodeo to use any of the county facilities. That way it encompasses everything, just in case.
Put it like that instead of, that's the restroom, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd move to make the motion we prohibit the use of the county restrooms according to the, the governor's restrictions. That close?
County facilities.
County facilities. What does it say?
Restrooms. Restrooms?
Oh. Well, we're gonna, okay. Would they want to second it or what?
I'll second it, yeah.
We prevent, prohibit the use of county facilities at the fairground. Is there any more discussion on this motion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same say.
And then the second one is, is reopening of county facilities.
I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, the second one would be reopening of the county, county facilities, courthouse commons building with, and the parking lot, and then the admin time.
As the plan you presented.
The plan I presented, yes.
I, I so moved. I'd be so second. It's been moved and seconded, we uh open up county facilities. Again, what, your date?
Tomorrow would be wonderful.
Yeah. Eight o'clock?
Sure. Seven fifty-five.
Is there any other discussion on this motion?
That will be by appointment, correct?
By appointment.
As for the courthouse?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I, yes, I should clarify that. Just, just for the courthouse, that so the fountain, you won't need to make an appointment for them.
And of course, the museum or main closed, the library already has their
Has their own plan and extension. They are, they're governed by their own, their own rules.
Any other discussion on this motion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh those opposed, same say.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that's plenty for me today. How about you guys?
I was sitting here, I done passed it, but I was wondering, what in the courthouse cannot be covered now? That we don't have, that we wouldn't have to open?
That we wouldn't have to open?
Well, I mean, allow people in. What can you not do? One of the patrons or one of the taxpayers, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
What is it in the courthouse that cannot do now?
Well, driver's license.
Tag.
You can't get a driver's, I mean, you can do a driver's license online. You can't take your test or C seven.
Well, tag, you can send it in.
Well, if you get a new vehicle, you can't come here and get a tag.
Right, but the state has put uh regulations on that and extensions to, for your V I N.
Yeah, there's been extensions, but just that's what we can't do.
Registered deeds or surveyors can't come in. Um I'm very limited in my knowledge of what the other offices can do, so I'm trying to filter through. Um district court has is probably one of the biggest, biggest things.
Yep. Okay, I just wonder.
One of the big things on it is we've found ways to make most of it work during the close down time. But at, by shifting to appointment only, be able to make things considerably more convenient, particularly for those who are maybe not so technologically inclined. Um one of the big ones I, is the register of deeds office. They've been able to work around it, but it has put a pretty tremendous burden on the register of deeds office because it requires them to effectively do most of the research for the researchers. They get ahold of them, get them what the property is, they scan and send them the the index sheets, then they send them back what they want, then they have to get all those copies, then they have to send those off. Um by allowing them to come in one at a time, that would be huge. Um and I'll be honest, I'm not quite sure with the treasures, uh treasures. But I think that's probably one of the bigger ones. Um and so that's, I think, our biggest deal. It's not so much that we can't do it the way we're doing it now, cause that's what our big plan was. I mean, that was the plan. That's why we were able to go to the way we did, if we found a way to facilitate it all.
For those who have access to a computer.
Yes, this will allow greater well still. Moving us in the right direction of trying to get things more open. Um so the other one, um I think we uh we're also needing to address, um I, or to address or not address, depending on what you guys decide, um was the uh hazard pay deal that you brought up.
Hmm. Do we wanna have Chris involved in that conversation?
May, that, I mean, and, and that's up to you guys on how you guys wanna handle that. Um I don't, that was really discussed much in depth at the department head meeting. I don't recall. It was mostly for reopening, but um and so.
Can you give us your opinion on, Carrie, today?
Um. Could, I could. Could I revisit it in a few minutes? Could I have a few minutes to think about it?
Yeah, certainly.
I would appreciate that.
We'll have to get Chris in here at some point.
I feel like I've taken a lot of time and Jay's been waiting very patiently, if we could allow
All I got's time.
If we can allow Jay to maybe take his turn and then I could, I could stay and join you again. That'd be okay?
And I don't mean to jump the line, unfortunately. Jay, do you mind if I briefly present this resolution? I have, unfortunately, I have a uh Zoom conference call with the district judges and for the judiciary that uh Judge Lewis sent out at ten. Um this is just the resolution and deed for uh the sale of the Belvedere Schoolhouse. Um sold, um sold thirty-five hundred to uh Hank Hallie.
Wasn't that thirty-six?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? I thought he said thirty-seven then, didn't he?
Oh, no, thirty-five. Uh thirty-five. Um the resolution provides for approving that bid because of course, the, the, you have you have the right to approve or reject um any bid. And so if you guys decide you do wanna reject the bid, of course, you can do that. I just drafted it, assuming you guys would go ahead and uh accept the bid, and then the deed, um transferring the property to him.
Hank wanted me to ask you, at what point he comes in to do the paperwork, he wants it in several different names. I told him, I didn't think that would be a problem, but that's not. He wants it in a, like a, more than just his name. I said, that was your deal?
Uh what I would advise him is he bought it. He, the county will deed it to him in his name.
And he can change the
He can absolutely do that as he pleases.
And the, just for information, then the, the second bidder back contacted me and said if there was any problem with a default here, that he would step up and pay the money if there was a default in any way in this contract.
And because of course, this was subject to you guys, it's acceptance or rejection, I informed Mr. Hank Hallie that um if you guys do approve it, I'll get ahold of him and we will convey the property to him at that time. At, in exchange, once he provides pay the thirty-five hundred.
Well, I would move that we go ahead and accept the bid on the Belvedere School.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we accept the bid of thirty-five hundred dollars upon the sale of the Belvedere School. Any other discussion on this motion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same say.
And you all need to sign both the deed and the resolution, and then the resolution has no other choice.
We just need to sign one of these?
Both.
Both of them?
One's a resolution, one's a deed.
Oh. Resolution did have two places for signatories.
Oh, they were on the next, it was on the next page.
Yeah, there's, there's. And that one is John, let him sign it. Need to go Christie's, he needs to sign it. We just all go Christie, I guess. What you got there? Is that part of it?
No, that was something over there.
Okay, you got anything else, Jay?
That was it.
Okay, I guess, back to you, Jay.
I've got all the guys, got everybody coming in this week. Trying to get, get all the territories bladed. Uh we got a couple of mowers going. Don't really have uh enough guys to get all the mowers going, so I was gonna see if it'd be all right to go ahead and advertise for two or three part-time more help this summer. Uh probably won't just ask for in the past, I think I've always advertised just for uh high school, college, but I think I've already had a couple of guys, uh Jerry McClain's already said that he, he's getting bored staying at home, so he'd like to come in and do something, so you know, just open it up to whoever wants to come in or apply. Cause we, I mean, like I said, we really don't have the help to, to keep somebody on the mowers all, all summer. We got plenty of other things that we need to be, be doing. Had to go out, or went out last Thursday uh to blade D Street from city service to Havlin, Blacktop. The main part of it was Forty First Street to Havlin Blacktop. It was, it was way too wet to be out there, but man, once I drove down it I don't know that I've ever seen a road that's in bad a shape. Moles had some, uh somebody come in and they just cut and ride. Chopping it for silage and had four trucks running and they, they weren't done. And I didn't think much about it, thought we got rain again and it was wet and uh but I made my way back over there Friday and uh they'd been out there, I was at noon and they was already done with the field and that road was as bad a shape as, if not worse than it was, so uh a couple of us went over there Friday and bladed it twice, so but I think we got it kind of straightened back out, but man, I tell you what, they, they made a mess of it. Uh worked on uh I Street, just west of one eighty-three, uh that's right out here by Panhandle, north of Panhandle. Uh, worked on, uh, I Street just west of one eighty-three, uh, that's right out here by Panhandle, north of Panhandle. The guy that was blading before, uh, there's a spot there that the water used to run across while it was getting muddy and low and. He kept putting stuff in it and, and, uh, so it was built up enough to where it was flooding the field of the farmer there to the south, so. I was able to get out there and get that dug back out and it's more like a low water crossing. There's, it has to rain quite a bit for water to get across there, but. That's, that's taken care of. Took the backhoe down, uh, old Thompson Creek Seventy-Sixth Road, uh, last week and. Where the beavers had been giving us trouble. The, the, they had a little place dammed up, but it really wasn't much. Uh, but I went in there and, and dug a bunch, really cleaned, uh, widened the channel out and cleaned it out and. Took out another beaver dam on down a little ways, so I think that's gonna make a huge difference. It helped dry it out and take care of it, so. Other than that, I guess I don't have anything other than, uh, opening, uh. Bids up unless you guys got something else for me.
So was the landfill gonna be unlimited days still or when we open it up, does that go back?
I, I've got the guys coming in, uh, regular hours, but we'll probably leave it for a week or two with the Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday. Just, yeah, we'll, we'll probably leave it that way. I, I am gonna have them. This weekend's a holiday weekend, uh, but it, it's gonna be open Saturday, cause we haven't been open, so somebody will be out there Saturday.
Do we need a motion to approve his part-time help or can we just okay that?
Well, we generally just okay it, yeah. But we can make a motion if you want to.
I don't care. I'm, 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 we're gonna make a motion.
The Supreme Court changes when he comes to hire the act.
Right, okay.
So, it's not necessary. Here are the two bids that we received.
Okay, Jay, nothing else?
Yep.
Things coming in.
Uh, Ron, we have to look at the bids that I presented to you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's, yeah, we have to look at those and we have to accept them.
And this is on seal?
He'll read it.
Sand seal, chat seal, and overlay.
This is a bid from Hef and Son.
Yes.
It's a, oh. Mullenville Blacktop sand, a sand seal.
One of them's a Mullenville Blacktop sand seal, Belvedere, uh, chat seal, chip seal, and, uh, Brenham overlay.
Okay, the total sum of a hundred and thirty-three thousand fifty-six dollars. Ninety-eight thousand three hundred and sixty square feet at one dollar and thirty-five cents a square foot. Let me see if there's another part to this.
This is a separate one here then? There's two different?
Yeah, there should be three of them.
There's three?
Yep.
This one's the Belvedere Blacktop that I'm holding here. Uh, the bid for it is three sixty-six, one ninety-six. Three hundred and sixty-six thousand. That'd be at a dollar sixty-six. Is that in a square?
That's chat sealed, isn't it?
Is that in a square yard? How do they figure that, square yards?
Yeah, that's a chip seal.
Chip seal. Two hundred and twenty thousand square yards.
Yours.
Now, this one is, uh, for the asphalt.
Asphalt.
Paving proposal. Four point five miles on Thirty-Ninth Avenue in Cowal County as requested. It shows four hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred dollars.
How much square yard, Ron? Did you got that on that?
Do I? Oh. What exactly is chip seal?
They, uh, lay the emuls, emulsion liquid.
And then heat it and?
No, they just lay that down. They, they talk in the tank and then they, uh, have a spreader that goes. Dribbles, uh, chips.
Into the hot.
Ice salt chips.
Not a square foot, square yard on it, no.
No, I didn't.
This is four point five miles and twenty-four feet wide, an inch and a half, class A commercial grade asphalt. Yep.
And that's where?
Brenham.
Brenham Blacktop.
How much should I add up to?
A lot. I've got three sixty-six here.
Three sixty-six?
Yeah, three sixty-six, one ninety-six.
This one here is a hundred and thirty-three thousand fifty-six dollars.
What's yours, Ron?
And this one is, uh, four hundred and seventy-seven hundred.
Four seventy-seven hundred?
Yes, uh-huh.
Did you get this one wrong, John? Hundred and thirty-three?
One thirty-three sixty?
Oh, fifty-six.
Oh, five six.
Around eight hundred thousand.
How's that compare to what you was thinking, John, or, uh, Jay?
Yeah, it was kinda, I kinda went off the last years and. Pretty close.
If you got, I mean, and one thing that can always be done is, I mean, can seek out other potential bidders, um, maybe AIPAC or one of those.
In the past, uh. I've, AIPAC has, has always come out higher than Hef's. Like last year, I think their bid was a hundred thousand more than Hef's. Venture, since I've been doing it and sending, sending them a request for bids, I've never gotten, never received anything from them. You know. Hef's have always come in, uh, low bid. They've always treated us really fair. You know, last year they let us, we hauled some asphalt for them. They took ten thousand dollars off of, off the bill for us. Kept, or Steve said that, uh, I didn't get in there, uh. The sand seal there at Havlin, or Mullenville, uh. Would rather have the chip seal done in town there with all the truck traffic and stuff, and I didn't get that in there, but. He said that they would do that without charging us any extra. As a good of customers that we are for them, so.
Hot Mix been running around a hundred and twenty-five thousand a mile, hasn't it?
No, I'd have to do some figuring. I don't. I don't remember. I, I don't remember what it is.
I was thinking it was, it was, it was over. That figured about ninety thousand a yard.
Yeah.
Well, does the Brenham Road need an overlay? How could, can it not be chip sealed? They're doing twice as much Belvedere Road for less money in chip seal as they're doing seven miles of the Blacktop and Brenham for.
What I've, what I've been, what I'm trying to, to get done is, uh. I'd like to every, every year do, uh. An average of sixteen miles of, of chip seal a year. And then five miles, approximately somewhere around five miles of overlay a year. Once, once I get, once we get everything overlaid, then, then that cost will pretty much go away for quite a few years. Just trying to get the, like a lot of the, the Brenham, uh, Belvedere, Felsberg. The south half of, of, uh, Mullenville. That asphalt is, is so thin. I mean, uh, when Gunner was here, he took some, some samples of how, the thickness of the asphalt in some of them roads. Some of them are, uh, two inches thick, um, and it's just. And it's been so many years since they've been taken care of, especially with chip, uh, chip sealing them. It hasn't been done on a regular basis that they're just, if, if we don't start overlaying these, they're, they're gonna. They're just gonna fall apart.
Basically, that's on a rotating basis that you're trying to?
Yeah, and, and like I say, once, once the overlay, once everything's overlaid, you know, ten or fifteen, twenty years. As long as we keep the rotation of the chip seal going, you know? And it, and it's, it's made a huge difference. We don't do near the, the patchwork that, that we've had to do in years past.
Are you getting a base fixed up when you put the asphalt in it too? Yeah, I mean, it's worth, it's worth a lot more you put asphalt on. You make, you're making base. You're nothing, sealing cracks and stuff with sand seal and the rest of, stop the moors from getting in it.
Yeah.
Preserving the road's what you're doing there, really.
Yeah.
When they do an overlay, how thick is it?
We've, we've been doing inch and a half.
Over the, over the top of, what is a, you said, they, the test, there was an inch, two inch, what is a good depth for a, a paved road?
Uh, Havlin, Havlin was probably the best and it was anywhere from, I think, uh, five inches to eight inches.
Really?
Yeah.
The Brenham Blacktop was the poorest.
Yeah, Brenham and Belvedere was, was.
Poorst two roads we had, poorest base. Whenever he took all those, cut all those core samples. He took a bit back that big around John, just drilled a hole in it and pulled a plug out of it, yeah. And several places down, every one of them, you know, he had twenty or thirty. Where he pulled out of the road. You satisfied with the bid, Jay?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's.
I don't think.
Fair enough.
Getting jigged by not having no more bidders, but I think he's pretty fair on the bid. Like I say, I thought. Hot Mix was higher than that last year, which price oil may be down some, but, you know, that's a byproduct and. They don't just jump up and build, make a lot of it anyway. Still a shortage in it. I move we accept three contracts and have to overlay the three, work on the three strips of road then.
Second.
It's been moved and second, we accept the bid of, did you get nine, nine sixty-nine, nine fifty-two? Bid from Hef for overlay and, uh.
Sand seal and chat.
Yeah, sand seal and chat seal. Any other discussion on this motion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed same time.
That's all I've got then.
Thank you, Jay.
Something needs signed?
Well, I was trying to figure out who needs whether.
I don't know whether we do or he does.
No, I think there's a place for. One of you guys to sign.
I just said.
Okay, well, I suppose.
You sign it. You can't go wrong.
Yeah. Five eighteen.
Come back in after you get to the.
Yeah, I just don't know how long it's gonna be.
Whenever you get through, come back. I'd like to have you in this, make some discussion.
Sure.
I was gonna have you do it. No, I was gonna have you do it during your time.
Find that by chairman and in my name or how the hell they want it done? Shay Lee?
Yes. I think the other one's in the envelope. And did you guys want to bring Carrie back up to, um, finish with her? Um, I, I mean, we are running fifteen minutes behind. Pat Klecker is waiting for us to be the call, so, um, I didn't know if you wanted to talk to Carrie now, or are you gonna make her wait?
No, I was just.
Okay, that's fine, cause they're just a phone call, so.
It's gonna be long enough anyway.
I think you can come back up.
Thank you for giving me a chance to. Switch my phones. I appreciate that extra few minutes. Um, you know, it's always a tough one when it's. Why, why my office and not another? So, um. You know, in, for our office, we all signed up to, to help people and to serve others and, and care for our community and not necessarily. Didn't plan on and happening to enforce the governor's orders. That wasn't something that we, we ever thought that we, we would have to be doing, but. Our office has continued to stay open through all of this, um, and it has been tough on our staff. Most weeks we have been working pretty much seven days a week. Um, we've not stopped services at our office at any point in time. We've just added COVID onto it. Uh, we are at a pretty high-risk job on our front lines and tensions are pretty high throughout the community as you can see with, with current things. So, uh, for, for those reasons, I, I would ask that we would continue it at least to see where things end up on the other side of this rodeo, cause I do anticipate that. That we are gonna have a heightened workload through all of this.
You mean you're, you think you're gonna have to do more testing at that point?
I do. I will tell you, I, I received many, many, I worked most of the weekend with this and actually. When I said people are passionate, some people have gone beyond passion and actually received threatening phone calls this weekend.
Really?
In regards to this, um, I, I'm only letting you know that just to kinda give you an overall picture of, of where this is at. So when I say that we are. I don't think any of us saw public health going to this point. You know, uh. We just, we love to serve our community, um, and so, and, and I'm still having a hard time wrapping my brain around the fact of where did all of this come from? And, and so for, for some of those reasons that I've stated, I, I am not quite sure where this is all gonna go. And they were all directed, it was all directed. Mainly at me, but, um, but my, my staff doesn't really have to help pick up a lot when I'm, I'm dealing with a lot of this, and so for those things, I would ask that. At least for a couple of weeks, we continue with the hazard pay until we see, see where things are at on the other side of this rodeo situation.
What if we go ahead and let this ride until the, the first of the month meeting and then what? What if we go ahead and let this ride until the first of the month meeting, and then we'll address? There may be some more things crop up that they're gonna be working overtime and extra time. Should we address it at the first of the month meeting as far as removing hazard pay?
Well, I just want to correct that there is no overtime. They're making overtime wages, so they just work a flat hour.
Everything's overtime.
Everything's an overtime wage, so I just wanted to correct that statement for the viewers.
Anybody have a clue what the cost of so far?
Um, the payroll reports that we sent out, that would have been, uh, gave you an idea for the Health Department and the Sheriff's Office, how much that cost? If you guys reviewed those when we sent them? Did you guys not look at it?
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys.
I didn't see them.
How much was it?
Twelve thousand for one, I think, seven for the other, something like that. Overtime pay, any deal?
Um, let's see, just real quick. For the pay period, for, um, April fifth to the April eighteenth, hazard pay complete between those two departments was paid out at twenty-six thousand, five hundred, sixteen dollars and thirteen cents.
Now, this is more than, this is how much more than what they would have got?
Well, yeah, this is at a time and a half wages.
That's a half, half their wages.
Mm-hmm. But that doesn't also include the admin leave when they're, like the jailers, they're getting admin leave when they're not working. They only receive hazard pay, so that's just hazard pay. That doesn't include their other administration.
Another month, they wouldn't quite get high on that.
And I can tell you.
Twenty-five thousand.
We started ours a little bit later. And we're gonna be here, we're gonna be doing it either way.
Mm-hmm.
So.
But you're saying it's that much above what they normally would get paid? Is that their total?
Well.
Well, it wouldn't be.
Maybe, maybe I'm not being clear.
They would make overtime with the Health Department, but like they may, now, but the Sheriff's Office makes overtime.
Yeah, I don't have any of those figures since I wasn't prepared for this. Yes, it's.
The two combined, right?
Yes.
Sheriff's Office and Health.
Between the Health Department and the Sheriff's Office, the individuals that have actually worked, worked hours, they worked a total of one thousand and eighty-six hours in that pay period between the two departments. And the, the wages for that paid out was twenty-six thousand, five hundred, sixteen dollars and thirteen cents. That is just the hazard, hazard pay that they were actually worked.
Worked, yeah.
If they didn't work, like example, the jailers, they received admin leave, so there is more salary to that, but I can't come up with that figure. So, that, and that just tells you how much hazard pay cost you guys for two weeks, was twenty-six thousand dollars between the two departments.
And I could get those figures to you, I just don't have them in front of me.
I think if you break it.
Well, I think.
Probably the largest portion of that was Sheriff's Office.
Yes, well, they have more employees.
Sheriff's Office.
I don't know if you guys really want to go through this, that's, you guys, I, I apologize. I, I'm pretty sure I sent the reports to you guys to review.
Yeah, we had, I, I sent you both of them, I read them both, yeah.
Well, without this question being on your mind, you don't really pay that close of attention to the individual figures.
Yeah, let's see.
Many people total do you have in your department?
Four.
Four?
Nicole and myself, and then Cassie and Patricia.
See, like for the, it doesn't break it really down. This breaks it down by the employees, what they received.
I thought it had in each department, too.
Yes, it does. That's what it does break down. That's the report that I sent you guys. But you're more than welcome to look at it again if you want to, if it really matters. You guys just asked for the hazard pay, that's why I did that for you.
Okay, what were your proposal, John?
That we go ahead and continue it until the next meeting and.
Well, that'd be May twenty-ninth. The next meeting is May twenty-ninth for you guys.
That would be after the rodeo, I think.
Eleven day review at that time, you mean?
Yeah, the twenty-ninth meeting. And re-assess what has been done and what needs to be done, and if things are looking a little better. Hopefully they will. Hopefully we'll get into this, what, phase two?
Do we have a second, Ben, if you're making the motion?
Would you want a second?
I will.
The move and second, we review the hazardous pay on the meeting of the twenty-ninth, is it?
Mm-hmm, the next meeting for you guys.
Twenty-ninth.
Is there any more discussion on this motion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same time.
Is there any information that I can bring to you at that time that you'd be interested in?
Give me, Carolyn.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I was too.
Do we want to know the individual departments? I mean, I suppose we can separate that. I don't know that it's gonna matter. I mean, what has been paid, what's gonna matter is if it's gonna, needs to continue.
Yeah. I mean, Christie gives us information on what the hazardous pay is.
Okay.
But it's, it's on the payroll deals in the back, back of it there. These departments.
I need to look at it closer and again, download it.
And most of that Sheriff's Department, because they've got more people. She's just got four people.
Yeah.
Why, thank you.
But they're supposed to do social distancing when they're not working.
Okay. I don't know.
Who's checking that?
Well, I mean, I, well, we got a problem, I think, in the Sheriff's Office.
Well, let's remember, we are in a meeting and we are, um, we are being recorded, so, let's stick to the topic. You guys moved that we're gonna continue the hazard pay. We'll review it at the end of the month, right?
Health Department till twenty-ninth.
Till the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And if it's okay, or is there anything else you need?
No, no, I, I.
We haven't finished our motion yet. We haven't voted on it yet. We weren't discussing.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, we voted.
Do you remember voting aye?
I, 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 I don't.
Thank you, guys, very much, and I appreciate the extra time to kind of collect my thoughts. As you can imagine, it's been a, it's been a fun weekend, so. Anything else for me?
Run away while you can.
I'm still here. I'm not leaving yet. I don't know if you, can take that as a good sign or?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then, uh, Pat Klecker is available. He actually misunderstood. He showed up and we informed him he can't come in, so he has been waiting in the parking lot. So if it's okay, I'll go ahead and call him. We can get that started. Because we are running behind, um, he might, uh, I will let, I mean, Pat will know that, but maybe we can limit the questions if you guys don't have anything, so that way we can keep moving on.
Okay.
Hello, this is Pat.
Good morning, Pat. This is Christie. I have you, um, on the phone with the county commissioners regarding your Santa Fe Trails twenty-twenty-one budget.
I'm not quite sure how you would like to proceed, whether you'd like to go through individual grants or just look at the four grants together?
I would say, Pat, I'd like to have your, uh, opinion on whether we should, should sign it or not.
Um, I absolutely would like for you to sign it. The, uh, my advisory board has gone through them, uh, and they have approved the grants as well. Do you have two grants that are for the adult, for the adult office and two grants that are for the juvenile office?
So it doesn't cost the county either way, right?
I'm sorry, one more time?
It's not costing Cowal County anything either way.
No, it isn't.
So why would we not vote for it?
Um, you should.
I think he's just calling to give you a review.
The only reason I can think that you wouldn't vote for it is if, uh, is if it was costing you money that you didn't agree to, which it isn't. Or, um, you know, we're not providing services that we should, and you believe that we should be providing services that it's not. But, um, all in all, I think that we do a great, a great job. Molly, who comes out here to Cowal County, um, provides services to the people that are convicted here in, in Cowal County, without them having to travel to Dodge City, which is always nice. Yeah, I think, I haven't heard any complaints, so I'm assuming that everything's good.
Okay. You guys want to make a motion? You don't need to.
I'll, I'll make a motion. We signed a contract with.
Need corrections.
Corrections.
I'll second Burke's motion that we sign the agreement with Santa Fe Trails. Any other discussion on this motion? If not, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. I guess that's all we need, Pat.
All right, great. Uh, it, you could, uh, make sure that I get the signature page. Uh, it's either faxed or emailed to our office. That would be great after the sign. There'll be four signatures.
Yes, um, make sure we.
I think you better take it forward, because there's. Here, you can sign.
Okay. That's one.
Maybe it's on this.
The signature pages are using right in front of the budget area. So about halfway through the grant.
Okay.
I guess need the chairman's signature.
Is there just one place for them to sign, Pat, or is there?
Yeah, just the chair, the chairperson needs to sign it, and yeah, it's one per grant.
Okay, and there was just one form, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, he's signing what he needs to.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please give me a, a call or let me know, and I'll be happy to answer anything that I, that I can.
All right, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, and I'll get that scanned over to you today.
All right.
All right, bye-bye.
I guess that's all of them.
Yes, and then if it's okay, I'll just go ahead and call Kristen to get that one started, since we're running behind. And then hers is the, yep, you guys got her paper, okay.
Hello?
Good morning, Kristen. This is Christie with the Cowal County Commissioners. We have you on the phone to discuss your twenty-twenty-one budget request for the CASA program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope that, if everybody's doing well. Hang on. And then if, I'm working from home and it's chaos, who's gonna deal with the little ones?
No doubt.
Totally understandable.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Where's the dog?
Pretty much. Um, well, uh, our, we're requesting six hundred dollars for fiscal year, um, twenty-twenty-one. That's the same amount, um, that we were allocated for, um, for twenty-twenty. Um, we, um, we were able to train an advocate who lived in Cowal County this spring, and, um, it was Burke Carshaw. Unfortunately, I know she moved, she's moving or may have already moved with, um, a job, the job changed. She was a schoolteacher in Greensburg. Um, so this spring, we were able to, um, utilize a new format, uh, guided learning curriculum, and we were actually able to do some of the training in Greensburg versus just doing a group in-person training, which was, um, nice to have that portability with the new, um, updated curriculum that our National CASA some patients provided to us. Um, I did include a, uh, a success story about, um, how it is an example of how CASA will advocate for kids to be able to have, contain, continue their connections with their siblings with visitation regardless of, um, placements and how those things go. A lot of our kids, they will get placed. Um, if they go into out-home care, they will oftentimes move outside of our area versus being able to stay locally. And so that can be a challenging thing when kids, um, lose that connection with their siblings. Uh, we had twenty-one children that obtained permanent. Last, last year, and then, um, we have, uh, our volunteers donated two thousand, one hundred ninety-two hours and twelve, they drove twelve thousand, six hundred ninety-four miles. And, um, we finished this in, in March, right before everything happened with the stay-at-home order. Um, I was able to finish up training with, uh, our volunteer coordinator. So she was certified as, as an advocate with OJA. And then I was also able to finish training with two of our other volunteers that were doing training. Um, I have one more volunteer to finish training up with, so definitely, um, had some growth with that. Technology has been very useful during the stay-at-home order, uh, as far as, you know, completing, completing volunteer assignments, uh, with paperwork with the court, using Zoom technology and, and other things like that. Um, it's definitely been, there's been some challenges, um, but our advocates have been maintaining contact with all of their CASA children and, um, been able to be supportive and provide resources, um, that are, you know, that we become aware of in our communities to support the kids through everything. So that's kind of just a highlight of everything that was in our written request. Um, do you guys have any questions or?
I don't. You guys, you want to have anything?
I don't, I don't have anything.
No, you're doing a good job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, while I do have you guys on the phone, we are, we had to cancel our Pinwell Gardens in April, uh, because most of the people, when we have, get together, they go over the mass gathering limit size. Um, so we're hoping to re, to do our Pinwell Gardens in June. Um, if that is, if that's a, if, um, if they move into phase two where you can have less than thirty people, um, we should be good to go ahead and do our Pinwell Garden. Uh, will it be okay if we go ahead and use the courthouse lawn again?
That is just fine, I believe.
I think that's okay.
Okay, um, our plan is to work with, um, Tammy Wolfies Daycare again and have the kids come and, come and plant, but we're gonna wait to see with the mass, mass gathering guidelines and all of that, so.
Nice.
But, well, um, if you guys have any questions or suggestions on, um, we'd love to have a board of directors member from Cowal County. If you guys know of anybody that you'd recommend us talking to, definitely, um, willing to do what we can to support and collaborate and work together. And I appreciate your guys' continued support. I know we've had several funders that have told us to expect cuts in our grants. And so it's gonna be interesting the next, uh, year, for sure, with how funding goes.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. You have a good day.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye bye.
Good night.
All right.
Do you go ahead and make a motion on this?
No, that's during the budget workshop, she just gives you the information, yeah, we don't make any decisions. Okay, so, um, if it's okay, can I just go ahead and move right along so we can get out of here? I have to go deliver my meals on wheels for the seniors at 11 o'clock, so if we can get out, great, if not, don't feel a little late. Okay, I will do it. Okay, so first I have some payroll changes that I'm presenting for the sheriff's office. First one is from Michael Tetter, it is a merit increase. The next one I have is for Tyler Finch, uh, he received a two and a half percent increase. Sorry, uh, on, um, Tetter, uh, Chris didn't indicate what percentage he received, so. And I don't have my book here, I think it's a two, two and a half percent, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So I'll need a motion on the payroll changes.
How long we accept payroll changes?
Second. Been moved and seconded, we accept the payroll changes.
Okay.
For Finch and.
Any other discussion on this motion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those both same time.
Um, have, uh, I, I was gonna have Che present the resolution 12, or 2020 dash 12, so I'll go ahead and do it in his absence. Um, this is a resolution for COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Resolution. It's the ones that we are in a state of emergency and this is extending to follow with the governor's, uh, order. So I would just need a motion to adopt that, um, continued state of emergency for Cowal County.
I would still move, all with the governor's recommendation on the emergency status.
I'll second John's motion on the resolution. Is there any discussion on this? All of you in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same time.
Okay, the only thing I have is, uh, um, is, um, the, we received a donation from the Give Thanks, um, Foundation with the Stars of Hope for you generously letting them store their barn in the, or their bus in our barn. And so they just wrote a nice little card, um, I thought I would read it to you. Um, on behalf of New York Says Thank You and Stars of Hope, um, please accept this donation to further the good work of Cowal County 4-H. We appreciate it greatly, the generosity shown to us in allowing us to temporarily store the Stars of Hope bus in the 4-H barn and appreciate the ongoing support for the, um, New York Says Thank You and the Stars of Hope signs. Carolyn Dietz, Director of Finance Administration, they, uh, um, donated $200 and I asked them to put it towards the 4-H, since that is the 4-H barn. Yeah, very generous of them. That's what I said, but very generous. Spoke to Jeff Parnas and he's very generous, so.
Let's take a five-minute break. Go on to Commissioner's Discussion.
Okay, go on, take a five-minute break, be back at, at 10:34.
I'm out of shape, stairs are hard.
You what?
I said I'm out of shape, stairs shouldn't be this hard.
You should, uh, use a, the elevator.
Round is a shape.
That's true. No, I use the elevator, it's gonna get worse even faster.
Well, I started using them here, this winter.
And we're on, stairs are hard. He's not here.
I said I'm out of shape, stairs shouldn't be this hard, you should, uh, use it.
When the person goes back, we'll go right back in, Grant did not pause that, so, and he's remotely, so we are live, so please.
I assumed as much, but.
Yeah, that's why I didn't want to take a break, I didn't think we'd be taking a break, since it's, there's nothing and I, as far as I know, there's nothing to discuss in Commissioner's Discussion that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Ain't gonna take long. What are you getting, I'm gonna tell the penny on first off. Shiny penny there, don't we?
Just one of Kristen's notes.
You a golfer, Jay?
Hmm?
Are you a golfer?
Not very good, but yes, I, I enjoy it.
Did you watch the Skins game yesterday?
I did not.
Live one of the vet?
I, uh, I, I don't really watch golf, I'll be honest, I mean, I, I've gone to a few, like whenever they've had the opens and Hutchinson will go there, go to that.
Oh yeah, I went to him, but.
I, I usually can't bring myself to watch it on TV.
I'd rather watch a Chevrolet Rust and watch golf. That shouldn't even be considered a sport.
Have you ever played golf?
Well, I tried.
You gonna be home today, this afternoon?
Uh, after, probably about four, I can be.
Okay, I'm gonna slip over there then, probably a little after that, need some flags and do some marking.
Okay.
If nothing happens, we may be back in there on either Wednesday evening or Fri- Thursday.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Because we are.
If the weather don't bother us now.
We, uh, got it ordered a week and a half ago and they said it'd be in in probably about two weeks, so. Hopefully we can get that done, get it assembled and.
We gotta go down to Pebble Deer and do a job, it's depending whether it rains, if it rains on us, we won't be able to get better. If it don't rain inside down there, we'll get back up there and do that.
Okay.
Probably either Wednesday evening or Thursday morning.
Okay, that sounds great. Yeah, just, uh, yeah, I should be, we have that meeting at three with everyone, but I should probably be able to be home by four, four thirty.
It may be a little after four.
That's.
Why would you whack a little ball as far as you could hit it and then walk and walk and walk to find it and then whack it again?
That's the great thing about it, if you're a poor golfer, it don't take you very long to find it, it's up there very close.
That's where the carts come in, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, golf, golf is a leisure activity, not a sport. Now, now, some people, it's a sport for them, but it's not for me.
To me, it would be a, be a club bending affair, I'm sure.
It's a very tough game, I think.
It's sure gotten popular in the last 20 years.
It's enjoyable.
You like it?
Oh, yeah, I used to play a lot, but I, there wasn't any good and then it got worse.
Where do you go, to the green here in Greensburg?
Yeah, played over here a lot.
The greens here are, the, uh, the greens here are mean, though, because they're all just so small and rounded.
Okay, I got 10:34, time we back in session.
We don't have a bird.
One bird. One of our commissioners is not here. Okay, Burke's back, we can start. I had a question on the vouchers. They, they show that there's a couple of ER visits that cost forty-two-hundred and something.
Four thousand dollars, yeah.
What in the world would that be?
Uh, they're, they had, um, a CAT scan.
Heart surgery?
No, were, uh, CAT scan and there was a portion of the fee of coming through an ER. I'm not sure if that was, uh, ambulance included in that, um, but I know there was a CAT scan done on him.
Somebody in jail?
I, I have no idea, I have no idea.
It's from the sheriff's office.
It was from the sheriff's office, so I don't know if they're still there. But there was CAT scan and your lab work and your X-ray, so that's what it was for.
How long will it take you to pull that invoice out?
I don't have the vouchers up here, I didn't bring them up.
No, but I mean.
Oh, it won't take me, as soon as the meeting's over, or do you want it now?
Well, I don't have to have it now, but I'd like to have it before I leave.
I can, uh, get Jeannie to pull it, um, and she can have it ready for you.
Thing about you not gonna make them give you a refund out there, well, it's expensive.
Yeah.
But it was one doctor's office to the jail too, wasn't it, included in that?
Uh, just two of them on there, I didn't, uh.
Yeah, it was two or three different deals that they had in there, they just, it run up to over four grand.
That's one of the expenses of the jail.
Yes.
You're responsible for their medical costs.
I assume the state told you we had to do that.
That's by statute, and old statute, that's been the law for, I'm prob, as far as I'm aware, pretty much forever. As long as our statute's been in place, it's been the responsibility of the sheriff, uh, to provide for the care of them. In fact, we even have special statutes in there that you cannot, you know, unarrest or release a defendant solely, solely because of the medical costs you would incur.
But I can have it after the meeting and have it for you to review.
Okay, is there anything else, anybody's got?
What procedure we got going on in the sheriff's department, Jay?
Procedure, in regards to what?
Deal that was shown on TV about the investigation of KBI.
Okay.
What, what do they have to do or how they have to do that?
What's going on, what I can, I guess, comment on at this time, after you speak to KBI officers. The matter was referred, um, by Greensburg PD to KBI, KBI's investigating it. We, my understanding, they should be having a, uh, the determination case filed on that, um, here within probably a week or two. Um, I have gone ahead and appointed, uh, Kevin Salzman, the Ford County Attorney, as special prosecutor for anything that may arise out of it, um, because given, um, the nature of the parties involved, I'm co, I can, I'm conflicted and so we've gone ahead and, um, got him appointed and KBI writing it to him. Um, I have not received an update, uh, recently under the status of this.
I knew you wouldn't do it, I mean, yeah, I would, I just wonder what procedure it was set up for that. But that's how it is, it goes to the, to the state and then you get an independent prosecutor.
The general procedure, and it's, I mean, it, each one's different, is you want an independent agency to investigate. Um, if we were in a bigger city, you know, it may be another agency close by or, you know, something along those lines. In a city of this size, since our PD and our sheriff's office worked together so much, he went ahead and brought in the KBI. And generally, in almost all of these, it's the KBI that investigates, just because, regardless of what the matter is, because of the parties involved.
So something should be, come out of next couple of weeks?
It, yeah, they will fit, they'll make their determination and if there is anything of it, it'll be, they are in communication, uh, with Mr. Salzman, who will make the determination on how to proceed.
Yeah. Y'all got any questions?
I don't have anything, so I believe I'm going to adjourn this commission meeting at 10:40.
10:40.
And I can run down and get that, uh, um, voucher for you.
Okay.
Friday morning.
Friday sometime. Don't have time yet.
Man. Good luck.
Old boy took his dog to the vet and it died. Vet said, I'm sorry, your dog's dead. The guy said, that ain't good enough, I want a second opinion. So this black lab came out of the back, started doing CPR and pushing and breathing on the dog and the old dog just shook its head and went back to the back. And the owner said, that ain't, what's that? I saw, he said, I wanted something, try to do, and the vet says, all right. This Siamese cat came out and went licking and sniffing and all around his dead dog and the cat looked up and shook its head and said, no. Went back to the back and the guy finally says, yeah, well, I guess my dog's dead, he says, what I owe you? The vet said, that'd be forty-two-hundred bucks, he said, gee, for a dead dog? Well, he said that was before the lab work and the CAT scan, it was only gonna be twenty. That stuff is expensive.
Well, I assume the camera's still running?
I have no idea, couldn't tell you, I don't know.
I thought he told Christie how to do it or something. She missed.
That ain't very fair to walk off and leave that thing running, is it?
He probably remotely do it.
Guess we'll be back the end of the month?
Twenty eighth, twenty ninth?
What day?
They used to go try and get a little debris out, but, uh, at this point, of course, needs adjournment, so. I'm going to go ahead and probably head out, I've got to, uh, get to a, another Zoom meeting in just a moment.
Yep, we're adjourned, yeah. All right, so you guys on the 28th and 9th, no doubt.
That's what I looked at, I didn't realize, uh, see what day that's on. Yep, and it's on the Friday.
On Friday?
We'll see you guys.
You open yet?
Yeah, but you're not open in the morning.
Well, yeah. You can go in and sit down now?
Yes, can.